Any other questions for Brady?
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Suzie, Lake Access.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Do you have a copy of the budget?
We do.
Okay, perfect. Not a whole lot has changed on the budget from year over year. We did update our system a little bit so we can itemize everything into QuickBooks now, which is really nice. But all in all, the in the income for Lake Access, we're asking to stay at the same level. We do budget the North Dakota game and fish at fifty thousand. Last year it came in at fifty seven thousand. But that all depends, we have to give them an itemized list of expenses throughout the year, and then they give us funding back depending on what was spent. So we just budgeted a little bit low there. Other than that, everything else pretty much stayed the same for income. We did have a few changes under expenses. Our septic removal has gone up slightly over the last couple of years. So we did include a two thousand dollar increase for that. Under other projects, that was an increase from forty five hundred dollars last year to seven thousand dollars this year. We did come in slightly higher on that, but budgeted a little bit lower. That is all the additional services that we provide. Bringing docks in and out, any repairs or maintenance that needs to be done on anything. So that's kind of what that line item is. Under utilities, the city of Devil's Lake was a slight increase of just a couple hundred dollars. That's all the garbage removal for all of the areas that we have around the lake. We budgeted a little bit higher for Greater Ramsey Water. We were told a few months ago that our rates were going to increase quite a bit, but we haven't seen that yet. So I did provide an increase for that. And then a slight increase with N D T C. So all in all, our expenses for Lake Access are sitting at about eighty six thousand five hundred and forty nine dollars. I did get asked with the city budget, what all Lake Access provides. So just want to give you guys a quick update on that. Because we have really expanded our services and what we offer around the lake. So just so you guys know what that fifteen thousand dollars goes towards for the budget. It's five public boat landings, which include weed control, grass mowing, daily garbage collection, all the porta potties, and then just general maintenance. We've got three summer fish cleaning stations with septic pumping, and then daily cleaning and maintenance. We have one year round fish cleaning station also has septic pumping, pumping and daily cleaning and maintenance. We have been watching those services as well. And it's been used so much that we've had to increase the tank pumping to about once a week now. And then we watch that as time goes and bring that tailor that back as our fishing season is no longer. Three ADA compliant shore fishing piers, all with vault toilets. We have two step systems on Highway twenty that provide access over the rip wrap down onto the shore. And the third project is in the works right now. We just signed the DOT contract and they're working on that. So we'll have a third system which allows easier access. We help with the shore fishing pond and pier at Ruger Park. The new wheelchairs and wall eyes chair lift and platform lift in Lakewood Park. All of the parking lots we maintain. And then also have the snow removal there in the winter. Grass mowing, garbage collection on a daily basis or weekly basis. And then it also includes the four welcome signs coming into Devil's Lake for weed control and mowing. And then we've added this year the four, I call them the economy signs. I don't know what they're called, but on the corner of twenty and two, those four pillars of Devil's Lake, we maintain the weed control and a little bit of mowing around those. And then the dock pier removal and installation for all of the shore piers and docks in the water for spring and fall. So just wanted to give a little update on all the projects and systems that the Lake Access Committee is maintaining right now. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer anything.
Any questions for Suzie? Thanks for the list of things you're doing there.
Yep, you bet. I sometimes I forget that people don't realize what all the Lake Access Committee is in charge of. So just wanted to give a quick update on that.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Have a good day.
Brenda, Lake Region Community Shelter.
Morning.
Morning.
So the shelter stays at full capacity almost every single day. And we've gotten a lot busier now with safe closing. We still maintain sober free. So when people come in, they have to have a breathalyzer and drug test. And so we are looking at increasing from twelve deaths to fifteen. So the fire department was there last week to do an inspection to see if they can approve that. Otherwise, that is everything with us going on at the shelter. We've had an increase in cost for food because of the Hope Center not having as much protein coming in because of the budget cuts.
So the drug tests, is that something the person has to pay for? Is that something you pay for? How does that?
Brenda, what would happen if our funding went away?
The shelter would probably close.
Okay. And you're seeing an increase for need, is that correct?
That's correct, a big increase.
Do people have an indication of why they're in the situation they're in? Or is it just a multitude of factors that play into it? Is it addiction? Is it mental health? Is it lack of affordable housing? Is it all of the above?
All of the above. You know, it's, there's never one specific situation. We have people staying there that are employed full time. Because of their history or rental history, they can't get into an apartment. Affordable housing is a big one. Mental health. You know, I spoke with the police on this about there's a, we've had a couple of people staying there that probably it would be more appropriate for them to be in a different setting. But the Human Service Center doesn't have a place for them. They don't qualify at that level to go somewhere else or to the state hospital. So they end up at the shelter.
Do you provide any educational assistance or support that way?
We do. So we have case managers who are working with them. We work with the path at the Human Service Center to try to find housing. And we also work with them on getting into outpatient treatment if it's an addiction issue. So yes, we do. And then we provide the transportation to make sure they get to those appointments.
All right.
So. So absolutely, it's, you know, we don't want people to remain in the shelter.
Right.
People to find housing. So. And it isn't people, you know, it's, it's a lot of people from this community. So it's not always people that you expect that would be homeless that are homeless.
Right.
So.
I have no other questions.
Anybody else? Okay, I guess that's good for now.
Okay.
All right. Star, you're up.
Good morning.
Morning.
Um, I believe you guys have all seen our budget or have our budget. I'll just highlight a few of the things that have changed in our budget. On the nine one one side, the only things that are included in the budget that are an increase are radio connection to the courthouse here. Right now it is a copper line and they want it to be fiber. So that's an expense. We are replacing the computers and dispatch. And then it's just salaries. We have a nine one one coordinator, one lieutenant, one sergeant, eight dispatcher, full time dispatchers, and one part time dispatcher. Just for reference, annual maintenance on the nine one one side is a hundred and sixty two thousand dollars. So that's where a lot of the money is going. Do you have any questions on the nine one one side?
So that hundred and sixty some thousand, is that due to aging equipment or is that?
No, it's just keeping the equipment going.
Okay.
Is part of that licensing for software, that Central Square?
Yep, Central Square and the homes and the radios and all of that.
It's not like we're keeping things together with baling wire and duct tape. It's actual software.
Yeah, that makes sense. Doesn't get any change.
No.
Any other questions on the nine one one budget? Okay, we'll move on.
The R R C budget, the only thing in there is mattress replacement. And that's twenty five hundred dollars. Most of the other things we completed this year. So there's not any capital improvements going on over there. So it's the mattress replacement and then just salaries. Over there, we have one operations manager, a case manager, and six staff. I did move the community service officer over to that budget because all of the expenses for community service are over there. So I put her salary over there also. And that's all that's going on on the R R C side.
Any questions on the reentry center? Okay, I guess we'll go on.
The L E C side, we have jail radio reprogramming. So at one of our meetings, we stopped at the state surplus office and bought several old radios that had been turned in. But we have to have them programmed for our frequency. So we have that in there, that's a five thousand dollars. We have mattress replacement in the jail, and that's nine thousand dollars. We put in two vehicles. And that's sixty thousand dollars. The vehicles would be an administrative vehicle, so probably a car for taking people or going to trainings or conferences or whatever. And then the other one would probably be a transport vehicle. And then we have a program called Correct Tech. And that is a medical records program. Right now, we're doing it all on paper. And with our nurse and our counselor that we have now, we need to get a program so that not only it's not all on paper, but there's a way to bill for the services that they're providing. On the L E C side, in the jail, we have for salaries, we have two lieutenants, four sergeants, sixteen full time COs, three part time COs, the nurse, a healthcare administrator, counselor, case manager, the myself, one finance administrator, one accounts payable, one office manager, facilities manager, and two maintenance and the half salary of the custodian that we share here with Ramsey County. One of those things, the initial budget that we provided at the L E C, it was a pretty good increase. One thing that I did right before our last budget meeting was on the income side, I increased the amount that I had budgeted for the state inmates that we have or our housing. So one of the significant increases that you see is the meals, the food costs. And I budgeted for ninety prisoners a day. Because that's our goal is to house ninety prisoners a day. Now that we're clear of all the state things that we were under. And so when I did that, it brought that up. But it's not accounting for all of the, it wasn't accounting for all of the state inmates that we are having because one tricky thing is the state could pull those inmates at any time. So. But by not having that in there, it was making the joint power revenue that we were collecting from the counties increase. So I budgeted for about half of the inmates that the state is providing us, which decrease the joint powers, that revenue that you will have to pay. And I'm pretty, I'm pretty comfortable with that.
We were having discussions prior to our budget meeting with the L E C last week. And was giving everybody a little bit of consternation because it was, you know, over an eleven percent overall increase. And with doing that magic with the Bureau of Prisons, D O C R, we're able to lower that. And have an overall budget increase of just above two percent. So, you know, about a nine percent decrease in our overall budget, which I was pretty giddy with, to be quite honest.
Well, and right now, we're how about half of our population is D O C R inmates.
Okay. Does that, does that fluctuate a lot or?
Not at this time.
Okay. And that's because of the overcrowding?
The overcrowding and they are sending us inmates specifically for our counselor to put through a treatment.
So how many? How many of those people, is that kind of a steady amount or?
Yes, yep.
That's because of the service that you're providing here that they don't?
They don't have it in any of the other local jails.
And you said you figured half?
Half of what could be expected.
Okay, and okay.
So I figured about half of a year.
Okay. Well, even if that changed your budget that much, if it's, it goes to show happened, the ability to bring in state prisoners, how much, what a big deal that is.
Right.
What's the no cut captain option here?
That this, this budget does not include a captain's salary.
So not even the fifty percent that you've been paying?
We haven't.
We haven't been paying the fifty percent. That's something that Captain Craft would like to stay as a Ramsey County employee for obvious reasons, for the benefit of the retirement that Ramsey County offers versus what the L E C offers. Twenty years ago, when the L E C had an opportunity to go to H. A. R. They had a much lower cost than what would be to switch over today. They chose not to. So I can see where Captain Craft would like to stay with that retirement and benefits that we offer as a county versus what the L E C offers. And we should have done a little better job negotiating that as far as half and half, those fifty fifty kind of thing. But. And I think you can see the difference up on the spreadsheet with the wages on what that adds in. Adds about a hundred thousand dollars in salaries, adds about seven thousand dollars in payroll taxes. And it adds quite a bit more in health insurance. I believe that's something that sure if you have captain in your budget.
Yes. Anything else?
I think the L E Cs have done a really good job, Star and her staff, Captain and his craft with their correction officers in the back. And all the restrictions that the state D O C R had placed on us once upon a time. It's taken us about five years to get completely off that list. And so I'm really proud of the progress that has been made over there with with staff. And hoping we don't upset the apple cart in any way, shape, or form. So. And initially, that overall L E C budget for Ramsey County was over three million dollars. So when I came in last week and we saw it at, you know, a two point nine eight percent increase instead of a, I think it was almost a twelve or thirteen percent increase from what it was last year. So I was really happy about that.
Anything else? Okay, Star, thank you. John, you're here just in time.
Good morning. We had our regular meeting this morning and just a couple things about John. Everybody's aware that the public meeting for the Newbury Snag and Clear is on August nineteenth at six P M. here in the commissioner room. We reviewed the channel A assessments and are still working on clearing up all the parcels for that and still waiting to hear back from Cavalier County on theirs. Mr. Craft is going to get us the cost for the pipe. So hopefully by next month, we can take and get that all squared away so that it's ready to come to candy so that the assessments can get put on in November. The. We received a request from Shane Eisen to put a culvert in Cavalier or Ramsey County number four. And I'm sure Mr. Craft will take and touch more on that. He requested a twenty four inch, but after looking at K L J's recommendation, we made the recommendation to go with thirty six, which would fit the informal stream crossings. So that will take in, he'll talk more about that. The major change to our budget probably, and still minimal, is we granted our office manager five extra hours a week. So the benefits will be prorated accordingly. And she also received ten extra hours, Jeff, a month for the joint board. So that's reflected in the, the water boards budget. Other than that, it was actually quite a short meeting, nothing major going on. So any questions on our regular meeting? If not, just to review the budget really quick, we are not at this time looking, this has not been reviewed by the full board, so, but at this time, we are not requesting any additional mill levies other than from twenty five. And going through the budget, it looks like any increases for the most part have to do with the office staff. And the only other change really is on the Hamer Sullivan assessment that was cut in half from a dollar fifty to seventy five. So that will be less for the revenue for next year. Any questions on our proposed budget preliminary?
So your preliminary is still at two point four six mils? That's what you had last year?
I believe so, yeah. Any questions on the public meeting coming up here in a couple of weeks? Any information that anybody, it's a much smaller clean out than the last one. So there's not a lot of parcels. I believe Steph or Stacy said there was like fifty seven postcards that went out as well.
Just a comment on my side, I won't be available that night. So I won't even be in the country.
Anything else for John? Okay.
All right, thank you guys.
Yep. Jason.
Good morning, everyone. So might as well lead off with what he touched on there briefly. We had talked about that culvert on four previously. We decided to turn it to the water board and we did a little investigation there. And we're going to go ahead with the thirty six inch culvert then. As long as you guys are okay with that, like, might as well get that motion done with.
Is there a motion to approve the thirty six inch culvert on Ramsey County four?
Move to approve second.
Motion and second, any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried.
All right, so just a few other updates. We're doing a few culvert replacements ourselves. We're getting culverts delivered around the county for that. The chip seal for twenty twenty five was completed. They have been fog sealed as of last week and dome and not a, I think they're at James Town is scheduled to start painting this week. So hopefully get those lines painted, get those signs down and get speed limits back to where they're supposed to be. We had the two big water crossings completed. The pipe have been installed. We're going to do the rip wrap ourselves, but the Johnson excavating crew is done on those two sites. The cost to do those, both those sites together was twenty two thousand dollars. We discussed that at the last meeting. So I'd like a motion to pay Johnson Excavating the twenty two thousand dollars for his culvert installation on the Friggi Crossing and the Schleithorn Crossing.
So moved. Said it.
Motion and a second to pay Johnson Excavating twenty two thousand dollars for his work on the two sites. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Otis?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
Will, how me?
Aye.
Gessner?
Aye.
Moving along, Mag Water is now completed for twenty twenty five. This, we talked about briefly, this is something, we're going to look at it with my budget, which I am getting together slowly but surely, pretty steadily, actually. It's coming along pretty nicely, but. So we need a motion to pay the thirteen thousand nine hundred and eighty four ninety for Mag Water. Brent will be getting invoices out for the twenty five percent share for the private parties on that. And I threw that figure in there too, that's thirty four ninety six twenty three will be in reimbursement. So I'd like to get a motion to pay.
I would so move.
Second.
Motion in a second to pay the Magwater bill of thirteen thousand nine eighty-four ninety, any other discussion? Roll call please.
Otis.
Aye.
Brett.
Aye.
Will Homme.
Aye.
Gessner.
Aye, motion carried.
Uh, next we have the two culverts on Ramsey County eight. We're trying to get these installed this week, because we're trying to get lined up for asphalt patches on all the sites up by hand. And we have a bad one on three, and then we have a couple other on eight already. So I have a quote from Johnson Excavating for eleven thousand dollars to install the fifty-four by eighty and twenty-four by eighty. I gave a brief explanation there, actually be a little savings to us if we go that road instead of renting equipment. Since all of our big culverts will be in, there'd be no need for the big equipment. So. I guess I would like to get a motion to hire Johnson for six thousand dollars for the fifty-four inch and five thousand dollars for the twenty-four by eighty.
I would move to hire Johnson.
Second.
Motion in a second to hire Johnson excavating to install the two large culverts on County Eight, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay, motion carried.
Next soft spots, the quotes were due back July twenty or July thirty-first. We had several people called for quotes when I had one returned. Uh, this is a pretty, these are pretty significant fixes, it's been an ongoing issue for a long time. Close was the only one to come back with a with a quote. He basically the only truck to get or guy that has enough trucks to handle all the waste material. Because the material will be dug out and removed and hauled off site, so we're not gonna try to waste it or reuse or we're just gonna get rid of all that muck. Fabric, it was had Paul help me design it all, so it's not something we just came up with at the shop. Paul helped me design it to standards, so the cost of repair for the six sites. All, he gave me a breakdown of all, I can get you guys that if you'd like to see that. I have it, but anyway, for the whole project will be one hundred and seventy-nine thousand five hundred and two dollars. That money is gonna come out of the FEMA money disaster money from the forty-six sixty that we have.
Okay.
That we transferred earlier, since this was not a budget item that Kevin did not have in there. But we have to do something for a permanent fix on that road, I've talked with Pat Johnson, I've talked with several people around there. They're pretty excited that we're actually trying to get something going to fix it, hopefully permanently, these six spots. And then maybe as we go forward, we can try to budget for a few more of these with some of the funds we have available to us. So I would like to entertain for a motion to accept closest quote to fix the six soft spots. On Ramsey County, two on Ramsey County four, just north of seven and four sites on Ramsey County seven in the first two miles.
What do they plan on doing, Jay?
They're gonna dig out, remove all the waste material and then put fabric in taper and then gravel.
Is it twelve?
Twelve inches and the minimum width would be fifteen. So, and the thing with the quote is we might run long or short or, I mean, within. You know, they understand, but this is what they quoted, but there may be extra material on that, because at the time, when we looked at it, we didn't realize we could only get fabric now. Rolls, so we were trying to narrow some of them to twelve, just the center lane, but. Couple of those, one of those is thirteen hundred and sixty feet long in one spot, and that's where that thirty-six inch culvert is gonna go.
Okay.
So we wanna get that in coordination with when they're doing this. Whether I have them do it when they close the road to do that one, because that's a full width spot as well. But we'll, we'll be able to figure that out and we'll keep the portfolio holders in the loop on that.
So how, how far down are you digging then?
Twelve inches.
Okay.
All gravel all the way up.
Okay. Okay.
We've done it on Ramsey County nine, the five, six miles between three and four, ten or fifteen years ago and it held for. At least ten, ten years before we saw any breaking at all on the ends of them, that's where they went to start to gravel. That's how they just fixed the Saltman Walkin soft spots on eighty-ninth Avenue, so. We gotta do something, something more than we have been.
And you said you you transferred money, so this really isn't gonna pinch you on the.
No, this doesn't come out of anything other than the money that we brought over.
And this will be done this year?
Uh, yeah, it has to be done back over twenty-fifth.
Okay.
It was stated, so they want, they wanna do it in the next couple of weeks, while they're working in the area, so.
Second.
Got a motion in a second to approve the site, work on the six soft spots. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Alright.
All opposed, say nay, motion carried.
Thank you, uh, next we're going to a few bills. Again, we got K L J's preliminary engineering on a twenty twenty-six thin lift overlays for Woods Rutten, Crary Road. Rocket Ramsey County eight from four to seventeen, and that is for three thousand five hundred and eighty dollars. Like to entertain a motion to pay K L J three thousand five hundred and eighty dollars.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion in a second to approve K L J bill for three thousand five hundred and eighty dollars, any other discussion? Roll call please.
Otis.
Aye.
Brett.
Aye.
Will Homme.
Aye.
Gessner.
Aye.
Um, eighty-ninth Avenue, Saltman Walken Project, K L J submitted a construction engineering. Invoices for forty-five thousand five hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty-one cents. So I would like to entertain a motion to pay that to K L J. I have already submitted for the hundred percent reimbursement to the DOT, so hopefully that crosses paths by the time we.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second to pay K L J for their work on the South Minewalken Project. Any other discussion?
When do they plan on being done?
Um, I, that's a good question for Paul. There's been a little design change there to nothing financially, but they're gonna bring the gravel up and. Use a little more top sill on the shoulders, we understand that, correct Paul?
Rather than putting the pipe on the shoulder and having a big little wedge set down to put that on. And only putting two inches across the whole top of the road, we'd like to put two point eight inches across the whole thing. So that we get it where the traffic is gonna be most of the time, because on a, even on a twenty-four foot wide gravel, people drive up the center most of the time. With all the subject issues we had this spring, I think it'd be better to get two point eight inches over the driving thing.
And I was never bringing that up, because you guys hear there was a change order, I'd like you to know what's going on there. Right, just changing a little design work. And the state was okay with that as well, so.
Okay.
So moving along with eighty-ninth Avenue, close submitted their, oh, sorry.
Where are we at? Oh, to pay the.
Pay it. Forty-five thousand dollars.
Yep, okay, roll call please.
Otis.
Aye.
Brett.
Aye.
Will Homme.
Aye.
Gessner.
Aye. Motion carried.
Um, close submitted the progressive estimate number two on eighty-ninth Avenue, Saltman Walken Project. For one hundred and fifty-three thousand seventy-two dollars and thirty-five cents. I need a motion on two things there, I need a motion for Chairman Gessner to sign the estimate and to pay the estimate. And then I will submit all that back and to the DOT for reimbursement.
Move to go ahead and allow Chairman Gessner to sign the estimate.
Motion in a second for Chairman to sign the estimate, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay, motion carried. Now we need a motion to pay the bill.
So moved.
Motion in a second to pay closed construction one hundred and fifty-three thousand seventy-two dollars and thirty-five cents. Any other discussion? Roll call please.
Otis.
Aye.
Brett.
Aye.
Will Homme.
Aye.
Gessner.
Aye. Motion carried.
Uh, the next thing I'd like to, was the last thing with Saltman Walkin, as far as I'm concerned, is we have one last bill. They had to move that Nodak Electric Cooperative line, um, we received the invoice for that. So I need to ask for a motion to pay six thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and eighty-seven cents. To Nodak Electric Cooperative, and again, I've already submitted for, that is also covered under one hundred percent reimbursement.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second to pay Nodak Electric for moving a power line. Six thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and eighty-seven cents, any other discussion? Roll call please.
Otis.
Aye.
Brett.
Aye.
Will Homme.
Aye.
Gessner.
Aye, motion carried.
Uh, next thing I would like to, this is what I'm gonna begin looking into, if it's okay with you guys. Purchase of a sign truck, a boom truck, we've never had one. We'd like to, we, since we moved some of that money over and we have some equipment money in the budget as well. We'd like to get something that we can work over rocks, over water, off the road safely, set them on a ladder. Or standing on the back of a pickup, I'm sure you've seen our guys on Tommy Live standing on the sides of the utility box. Um, it's just time, we got a lot of water crossings that we have signs in and things like that. We've been, I've been just feeling around, looking around, you can get a really nice boom, use boom truck for thirty thousand dollars. We don't need to buy new, we don't use it enough for new, try to find something decent, I think we have enough mechanical ability between the staff down there that we can. Figure out what's a decent purchase. Um, it's just something, I was gonna, I need to talk with the sheriff and Star maybe, we, all of our nine-one-one signs are shot within our whole system. Not just the county system, but the township, they're like metal blanks out there, I wouldn't wanna be the ambulance driver. Trying to find an address on a metal blank for a nine-one-one sign.
Yep.
Um, signs have really been ignored in our county. And I got a couple guys that are pretty passionate about signs right now, so I wanna hop on that window and run with it and get it done. So, so anyway, we're gonna look for that, I'll be coming back asking for approval on that once we find something. Um, couple options maybe, or however you guys would like me to handle that, I don't know, I've never purchased a piece of equipment yet, so. I don't know how you guys would like me to handle or move forward with that.
Is there a specific number? Okay, yeah, just.
Imagine this is gonna be like on an auction or something.
Yeah, uh, there's one listed in Bismarck, um, the private site and there's auction warehouses and things like that. I put fifty thousand down because it depends on, if you get into an auction, you might have to go a little bit, but I really have seen some nice for thirty, thirty-five thousand that. If I would have had my ducks in a row, but we're trying to play catch up a little bit here. And the other thing I, when I've been looking at this FEMA money, we're gonna need a tar kettle for spring, so I'm trying to get those prices for you guys too. After the fire and all that, we, we did make it work, but we just, it gotta be replaced. So, but that, that's not nearly as expensive as I thought that was gonna be, that's coming in, looks like those bids are coming in around fifty thousand, low fifties. For a new one, and that's not without our trade yet, and there is trade value, because our tank and bar and all that's still good, it's just our control panel and stuff is shot, so. But yeah, so I'll get some prices together on the signs, last, the sign truck, I mean, and then I need to, maybe. Would Mister Jagger be help on that, is there ground, I mean, you don't look at the grounds on. E M S stuff like that, I don't know. Yeah, that's what I'm looking for, that's why I want to talk to them, I'm looking for funding for the signing, I'd like to help the townships as well. The county we have, we can take care of ours, but all those townships, I mean, you guys know you drive the county, those nine-one-one signs are bad. So, um, last thing on the forty-six sixty emergency relief, some of the townships are still getting in. So, um, their payments from those previous years. We actually will have one coming from Fancher Township as part of that culvert replacement that Johnson just did. One of the ones we just paid for, they, there was FEMA funds available that towards Fancher to build that grade and to replace those culverts. So that money will actually be transferred to Ramsey County, since we're covering the costs on that. And I was also emailed by the state that there's a potential of up to a hundred percent. That's why the number fluctuates there, but down to eighty, the eighty point nineteen for twenty twenty-two, those C R P sites. We temporarily fix those with culvert and material, and we did have all the record keeping on that yet. So we were able to submit for that, and that was accepted, so I'm just waiting to see a final number and that check will come. Again, for reimbursement to the highway department, so that, that's exciting to see that, that we were able to still get in under that, under that window. And last but not least, we were invited by Camp Grafton to do some blade training, motor grader training. So next Monday and Tuesday, we're gonna send at least three, possibly four employees. Out to Camp Grafton, we're gonna work the training site the first day with their machinery. And then the second day, our guys will have to bring their motor graders, because we'll actually go on the road and do road training with Camp Grafton.
Good.
With, with their staff, so. Yeah, so we'll take some new hires and some guys that always wanted to learn, and it'll be a good chance, because the proving grounds the first day. Will be a good time for anybody who's never ran the machine, and then we might flip flop some bodies for the second day, when we get into mainline grading, so.
Sounds good.
But we're gonna take advantage of that and try to build that relationship.
Good.
Anything else for Jason? Jason, do you have enough, enough staff over there?
We are finally full staffed.
Okay.
Um, we helped Roger for a week, he was short a guy, so we took one of our guys and gave him a driver.
Out on the weed truck.
Yeah, so, um, he asked me how we were gonna go about wages for that, I said we'll just pay him. Just easy here, Candy, we're all in a whirlwind, everybody's trying to catch up. I mean, we didn't change his wage or increase anything, he was still our employee. He was with them from like eight to four-thirty, so he spent a few hours with us a day anyway, so I'm not worried about it. I don't think it's easier than trying to sort out sixteen or twenty-four hours or whatever. So yeah, things are going well there, our new hire, Caden Thorcell, he's come on guns blazing, he's doing a good job. He's out of the oil field, he's a young guy.
With the weight trainer training that's going on, um, you have a temporary fill-in staff that would help. Fill in on, uh.
That's who's gonna go on the first day, I'm gonna send Brenten Axeman, he's one of our foremen down there. And he's never ran a grader, I want him, or Jacob, Jacob Maslow, he's, he's ran the grader a little bit.
Yeah.
Brenton never has, so I'm gonna send Brenton one day to get some training, so those two guys can plug in if I need them. And then Caden, our other new hire, he's never run the motor grader, so that'd be the ones going to the proving grounds. Then when we go to the road, I'm gonna send the Penn District, just to give him some more time behind the sticks and then Webster.
Well.
And then, uh, I don't know, I'll see who else, probably one of the other blades. I'll try to get three out there, even if I don't send the operator, I'm gonna take the Devil's Lake Blade for sure, since it's close. And then one of the other two that wanna maybe run or both of them, but.
That's great.
Yeah, I was really happy with the invite. I don't, you know, I don't know where, how Mister Todd got ahold of us or what, but it was a nice that they offered it, so.
Yeah.
Um, budget, I've talked to Candy a lot, she's been, I, I, probably too much some days. She's been helping me, but, um, we're getting there, I'm waiting right now on some figures for Paul for the thin lift overlay stuff. When I get the, not that waiting on them, but when I get those, we'll be a lot closer, we're getting pretty close, and then it's just some levy money. I don't see any big changes there or anything, but, because everything's kinda straightforward as long as cost, that's what we, what we need, but. Everything else, I got the numbers plugged in, kinda know where we're at, so.
Okay.
We're coming along.
Alright, thank, thank you.
And then they're going to ten from nine.
So they're actually not working on site number in order, but they're doing the two gravels first and then. So, they're actually not working on site number in order, but they're doing the two gravels first, and then they'll do the two asphalt, so.
Yeah.
Those are underway.
Yeah. Moving on to unfinished business, uh, lease for the abstract office, Daniel.
Yes, that has been transmitted to the abstract office for review. Uh, Downey has not gotten back to me as of yet. Uh, well, she indicated that she'd received it and that she would be reviewing. Uh, and, uh, hopefully they'll have a response by the next meeting. That's, shouldn't really change any of our timelines that we've discussed, that the commission has discussed previously. There's still plenty of time for them to have everything squared away one way or the other by October first. Um, I have not, I think I've neglected to bring this up with the general commission, uh, I've spoken with the committee, uh, for the courthouse on it. Uh, this is still a severely reduced rate of rent for the, uh, business to rent from the county, uh, just versus what the general rate is here in the community. Uh, for square footage and other such things, I, I just have to notify you because it's what I'm here to do, that this could be considered by some overly zealous uh, community members, a gift to the abstract office, I think there's a lot of uh, reasons why this commission has recommended the rate of rents. Uh, because the abstract company is important to the community, it's not something that we can do without. So there are some offsets there, but i- it has been discussed, uh, there are instances in other counties where similar things have come about. Not necessarily with abstract offices. Daycare's renting from the county and spaces like that, there are just some edge cases that I at least need to warn you about. This is a potential, uh, the gifts clause makes you individually liable as commissioners if that was proven in court, um. But, that, that's all I have on that, if you have questions, we can discuss it here, you can discuss it with me individually. Uh, offline, but I just needed to make sure that everybody was aware of that, that's all I have.
Any questions for Daniel on that? Okay, Home Rule Committee. Looks like we got five members, just in the nick of time. So what's our next step here?
Let's see, um, next steps will be getting some specifics in place. Um, about the direction that the commission would like home rules, the Home Rule Committee to take. Um, just trying to make sure that my notes to you are correct.
See.
We do need a motion to appoint the five members.
I'd make that motion to approve the five members that submitted letters of interest to serve on the Ramsey County Home Rule Charter Committee.
I will second.
Okay. Motion and a second to approve the five individuals that, uh, sent letters of, uh, interest, that'd be Adam Lypom, Shane Hamery, Brandon Padilla, Jamie Nihus, is that how you say that? Nina, Nina Heiss? And Corey Wass, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion carried.
So I'm assuming that meets minimum requirements, Daniel, as far as community members?
Uh, as long as all five of those, uh, members are Ramsey County citizens, that's that's the main thing, um. I don't know why somebody outside of Ramsey County would want to get in the middle of that conversation. Uh, so yes, uh, we just need a minimum of five members. Uh, with the, with this commission appointing them. Um, the, the members will meet to select their chairman for leading the process. And this, this commission has some things that need to be established, the most important step of selecting the, the committee is the important part from here, uh. The next steps are setting any sort of compensation that this commission thinks that they should get for their time. Uh, and any specific aid that this commission deems necessary so that they can get the job done, whatever information that they need, that seems more like it would be a conversation with them, once they've been able to sit down and discuss some things. Um, from here, it's less deadlines, other than making sure that the plan gets out in an appropriate time to be reviewed by the, either the, uh, and I may get my terminology wrong, the primary election, uh, next, I believe it's in May.
June.
June, and then, or the general election, November, uh, at either one of those elections is when a potential charter can be presented. Um, so, as of today, the only thing that needed to happen within the sixty-day deadline was the appointment of the individuals who are going to be on the committee. Um, you're directing them to draft a charter, uh, and it's really up to them of what they decide at this point, uh. So I assume now that they've been appointed by this commission, Candy or somebody else will reach out to them, let them know that that's been done. And that there will be some coordination from here, my recommendation is for, uh, probably the commission to appoint somebody one of the members to just kind of spearhead communication, so that that all doesn't have to go through Candy or somebody else. Um, I would leave that up to you, if that's something you would want to do, otherwise it would just be through the commission as a whole, um. But just having one person be that point for communication and trying to keep things moving along as quickly as possible, I know we have lots of time, is what it feels like at the moment, but that will get away from us faster than we think, as you all know.
Yep. Like, that's good advice, some from the commission should kinda have the, the reins on this. Um, yes, I'm gonna point at Jeff, he's been through this once already. Is that something you can handle, Jeff?
Yep.
Okay, so, um. Okay, that sounds good. So we'll get those people contacted, um, public comment policy.
I think, did we vote on the?
Oh. No.
I don't think it is.
Okay, all in favor of the five individuals for the home, or the Home Rule Committee? Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carried, thank you, Jeff. Public comment policy.
We discussed this last time, this is, I did not really even realize it means just a slight change to make it kind of specific. There were a couple of options, I believe you've all seen in the emails, uh, from Indaco. This one makes it clear, uh, as to what members of the community would need to do in order to have comments. Currently on our agendas, the visitors and delegation section is what takes place here. Or this would take the place of the vi- visitors and delegation section. It's after all of the procedural aspects of the meetings. It's, the major things is, it requires everybody to put the commission on notice that they're planning on coming and speaking as opposed to coming in at the last minute and speaking if the room filled up in the last thirty minutes, things like that, where it just makes it more procedural, it makes it more formal. I know that that is not always the favorite way of doing things, but in the era of people coming and speaking their minds whenever they want and however they want, it's best to keep things as orderly as possible. Um, this also gives a mechanism for the general public to have to put in written comments that the commission can review. Uh, I don't know that that was not allowed previously, but it certainly makes it clear to the general public how that might be accomplished if they would rather write into the commission as opposed to speaking in person. Are there any questions on any of this?
Oh, looks pretty straightforward to me.
I, I would recommend passing this, um, making this the policy of the commission, uh, if it was passed today, that it would be kept on kept in our records, uh, so that it could be reviewed if need be. Uh, it should probably be posted on the county website as well, just so the general public can review it at any given time. Uh, but I, I do recommend passing it, just so that there is that, uh, policy in place.
I would move to approve the public comment policy.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to, and a second to approve the public comment policy, is there any just questions or questions?
I think to clarify this was something that the legislature should have passed, that's required of public entities to adopt. Um, I don't think we've ever, and I don't, anybody interested in speaking at any of our meetings. Uh, this, like Daniel said, clarifies the procedure on how it's handled. Yeah, the topic that they're able to discuss. By the way, it looks, it looks like it has to be within an agenda item. Um, and they have to submit a card notifying that they're going to speak.
If I can.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, that is correct, um, this is, the legislation that was passed gives the general public the right to come and comment in person. This policy is not required by statute, but it is a good it is a good buffer to any potential issues, should belligerent community members or the general public from outside the community, everybody has a right to be here and to watch and listen. Uh, I think this is probably a reaction to some of the, uh, paid advocacy that we have seen. Uh, paid protesters, things of that nature that have happened around the country. This is to make sure that we can make, ensure that our meetings go in a safe, orderly manner, and having some backup in our own policies to enforce those rules if we choose to do so. Um, obviously, this is a policy, the commission can alter it at any time if it sees fit. Um, but, no, I, I agree with Commissioner Frith, there, there has been no issue at these meetings previously that I'm aware of, that gave rise to this specifically.
That's a good place to start, I think it's part of the reason the state legislature did this is because people weren't allowed to speak in other, other commissions, so, um. I, I, I agree with Jeff, I don't think there's anybody ever been turned down, um, most of the time where don't get any, don't get anyone we ask for comments, so this would be the flipping of that page, I think this is a good start, and like Daniel said, if there's something we need to change in the future, it's relatively easy procedure, so, there's a motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion carried. Thank you, Daniel, for that.
Yes, sir.
Uh, moving on to new business. Approve in-state lodging rate to a hundred and ten dollars.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the in-state lodging rate, any other discussion?
Know where you'd wanna stay.
It's good with the degree, but it does not work to cover provisions.
Yeah. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion carried. Next item is the Attorney General's letter in response to uh, asking the question about who owns inundated land, um. I guess this is just to recognize the fact that we got the copy, or got the, got a letter in response. Um, just the letter is that they're not gonna comment on this, and that's their prerogative, um. Do we need anything that officially recognizes it, or?
No, nothing is needed from the commission, uh, I had received this. Oh, I believe it was about two weeks ago now, uh. I, I more had requested that this be addressed by the commission before it's disseminated to the general public if anybody's seeking to view it, uh, but no, it's, this is the response that we were waiting for, I I don't think that this response is a surprise to the commission, this is what both myself and Mr. Cummings had essentially said would be their response. Uh, certainly not the response we were hoping for, but, uh, it is a response nonetheless.
Yep. Um, and there is, I mean, it's public documents, so.
Yes.
Somebody requested a copy of it, shouldn't be a problem.
Not at all.
Uh, moving on then, unless anybody's got any comment or on the letter.
Well, I don't think it surprises, yes, Mr. Hall said that didn't surprise anybody. The response that we received, I do wanna point out that, uh, the committee that was assigned to study inundated lands at the legislative will be, uh, it's the Water Management Committee, and that's heading out, and, uh, a lot of smart, knowledgeable people across the state are part of that board, meets their first meeting is September eleventh in Bismarck. Representative Frey from District Fifteen, uh, Devil's Lake is a representative on that committee.
That's good. Uh, anything else on that? Approval of the homestead credits in the packet.
Second.
Move, motion and a second to approve the homestead credit. Uh, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion carried. Letter from the Benson County State's Attorney regarding sheriff duties in that county. Sheriff Lang, do you get a copy of this?
Yes.
What I've given the commission is a memorandum of understanding, uh, that I've sent to Sheriff Lang, uh, after I've sent to Sheriff Lang, uh, after conversations we've had about the letter from, uh, Benson County State's Attorney Jim Wang. Uh, Sheriff can absolutely correct me and I'm sure he'll be getting up here to speak with you here momentarily, but um, it's his opinion and my opinion, I absolutely support him that Ramsey County doesn't need to be spread any more thin. Uh, the sheriff's department does more than enough work in Ramsey County to keep it busy every shift, every, every day. Uh, being responsible for Benson County and patrolling their uh, jurisdiction is not something that needs to be on Sheriff Lang's shoulders, making Ramsey County liable for what happens in Benson County. In our discussions, I, I believe, and maybe I've missed some things, this is not a final draft or final version of this memorandum of understanding, but this is essentially an agreement that we will help when we can, we will support, uh, respond. Um, not that Ramsey County and Benson County haven't always had good relationships and asking for help and always for the most part responding and showing up where help is needed. Uh, but obligating Ramsey County for the situation that Benson County is in is not what I would recommend at this time, but certainly we should be good neighbors. We should help where we can and give what we can. Um, the Sheriff Lang can correct me, but I think it's three or four deputies are currently cross-deputized in Benson County, working there on their days off. Uh, everybody is very much wanting to help and doing as much as they can in their individual capacities and this is just a little extra, uh, promise to help, but without exposing ourselves to liability, requiring the sheriff to be in charge of two different counties at the same time and all of the potential headaches that come with that.
Brian, you wanna come up and tell us what you think?
Seven deputies from Ramsey County that went over to Benson County and took on a part-time status, uh, with them, so they'll be, show up as Benson County employees. They'll assume the liability, they will pay them. Uh, they'll be doing this on their off time. Uh, we've assisted so far in every way that we can. I've gone over there once. The, the problem they got is they got one deputy left. He's in training with National Guard, otherwise they have no staff. If you were to take over that responsibility, uh, even with my guys going over there to work part-time, you're not covering every shift. So therefore the sheriff becomes liable for any call that comes in that needs to be answered. So that would fall on that sheriff. They answer every call. And if you don't, then there comes the liability. As much as I wanna help him, I think it'd be spreading us pretty thin. Here, the potential is there. Uh, with this memorandum of understanding, uh, say those of us that aren't working over there as part-time, they get a call in the middle of the night, they need assistance. He gives us the opportunity to not worry about jurisdictional boundaries. We can go to assist. Uh, we know Dick Horner is the sitting sheriff right now. Been out of the law enforcement for quite some time, so he might need some assistance. It would give us that opportunity to go over, assist him, and then we come back. So we're not totally closing the door on our neighbors. We're just, I just don't think that we're in a position uh, staff-wise and everything else to assume all the responsibilities. I know they reached out to three other counties. I haven't had no other sheriffs call me or wanna talk about this or.
That was a question after anybody else was doing the same thing or if they.
I've heard nothing from anybody and like I said, we've been over there trying to help and so I don't know if they just assume that we're gonna assume the role. That's kind of where we're at.
And this MOU could easily be adapted and expanded to include any other surrounding counties of Towner County uh, or McHenry County or is that Eddie County that's south of Benson County?
Yes.
Okay, or Eddie County, uh, they could be added on to this MOU very easily.
And this is just a rough draft, so if you read it over, you think there should be something in it. I got it late yesterday afternoon and I just kinda breezed through it, so I might pick it apart a little bit more yet.
I certainly like the idea of the MOU versus what the proposal was from, uh, Mr. Wayne. Little disappointed that they've, you know, didn't have a backup plan in place. Um, you know, even though the resignation was the end of July, they had submitted the, um, request for removal in the early part of June, and so here regardless of when the sheriff resigned, they had that wheels motion and that's something that should have been, um, part of their planning process all along, so. To drop that load right on us, I think is unfair. You know, and I, and I like the MOU a lot better than the proposal of temporary county sheriff.
So I'm just gonna ask questions here because I don't really have a clue. Maybe you don't either, but would it be out of line for you to ask these other county sheriffs what their plan is just so we kinda know? Um, you know, if our guys, our, our guys, our employees are the only ones that are willing to go over there on their time off and help out or, you know, I mean, because that's still, since you've already mentioned the shifts aren't covered and it says, you know, we can come over and help you and then come back, I can see that being I don't wanna say abused, but more of the normal than, than just a once in a while deal.
Right, I, I can reach out to the other sheriffs.
I mean, I wanna step on Benson County, you know, I mean, but I'm just trying to look out for, you know, our, what we've already talked about is providing the service that we're providing in our county.
Yeah, I can reach out to the other sheriffs that have been notified and see what their, uh, with their ideas, or I know there's a deputy or two from uh, Eddie County that said that they would come up and work. They contacted me, so I gotta, I'm referring them to to Mr. Horner, uh, so they can set that up. So I'm, yeah, I'll reach out and see if any of them are willing to share or what their thoughts are.
It's also worth noting that the Highway Patrol has been doing a lot of the patrolling uh, the last month or so since all of this has happened, but there are not enough of them in the district to patrol Benson County, uh, as sheriff's office was previously.
How does Spirit Lake Nation fit into this?
Uh, the Spirit Lake Nation, well, they, they got BIA that does their patrolling. Uh, the only thing they would respond to on the Spirit Lake Nation is if BIA requested them or if it has to do with non-enrolled members. Other than that, they really have a little jurisdiction.
I asked the question because I noticed a lot of people, or maybe a little bit more, there was a Benson County sheriff that was a camp drone at East Bay. And I, I have no idea what their, what their policy is.
Yeah. Yep, but they do have jurisdiction over non-enrolled. Yes, so when they encounter somebody that's not enrolled, they'll call Benson County. Or if they happen to be in Ramsey County, they'll call us.
And, and that's only if they're being investigated, being arrested, something of that nature, otherwise they're released and they go on about their business. Like a, like a ticket or something else like that, then they contact and if they don't have to, they let everybody goes.
Are we currently assisting Benson County with their prisoner transports? Do they have court dates and different things like that that uh, need to be transported?
Uh, my understanding is they're trying to work something out with the jail to do transports. We have covered uh, a couple little things and when it first happened.
Sure.
Uh, so we've just been kinda working some things out logistically for them. So, yeah, they got, they got a trial coming up, uh, one of the deputies that has signed on to work part-time over there will cover that, so they'll be paying them be there, so that was the whole idea, trying to get some of the deputies to work their part-times to cover some of that. So, when they go over there, they're using all of Benson County's equipment and stuff. They're taking nothing to Ramsey County's over there. I had made that very clear. The only thing that I seen that was kind of a little rocky is the cell phone. Uh, they did get them some track phones, so now they're gonna try to, one of my guys was trying to put their numbers in. Uh, they were just wondering if they could just carry their Ramsey County phone instead of three other phones. They got all their contacts, they got, everybody knows their numbers, uh.
I, I, I guess I, I can see where that would be a little confusing and why now you got two phones you personally work and now a third one, another work phone, I think that I don't have a problem with the, the cell phone thing. I mean, personally, I think you know, it's, I don't, I probably remember two phone numbers of all the ones in my phone and one of them's mine. And, you know, so I mean, I can't imagine having the, in, you know, the reflex to, I'm gonna call so-and-so and realizing that's your track phone and not your regular phone and not having a number to call when you have a question or something, so, um. So this just popped, so like, uh, bulletproof vests and stuff, they're gonna have, I mean, is that kind of a one size fits so many people or is that a personal?
They, they went over to Benson County and went through their stuff and picked stuff that would work for them.
Okay.
Uh, they're using their sidearms, they went, they're getting qualified with their sidearms, they're gonna be using their patrol cars, their laptops in their cars. The only thing that we did is they're gonna use the same unit number they got here because we don't wanna confuse dispatch.
Yeah.
But when they log into CAD system, uh, with Benson County, say I'll use my number, so I'll pop up as forty-five thirty B, so they know they're working in Benson County.
Okay.
So then, when they went over and did all that stuff in Benson County, that was on their time then?
Yes.
Like, table this and look it over and think about it and if you have some changes that you would like Daniel would make, I think that would be prudent to have it wrap it up next meeting, but I think it deserves some intentional thought here because we're gonna have taxpayers asking us questions as well that we have to make sure we have the answers for.
This doesn't necessarily need a motion or approval from the commission. This is something that the sheriff can enter into as he sees fit.
Okay.
Memorandums of understanding generally work. Uh, this was more of just to address the letter that Mr. Wang sent, uh, obviously will let you know, or the sheriff will let you know when he decides to enter into a memorandum of understanding, i- if that's the ultimate decision. Uh, and that final version will likely be submitted to you, but just, just so you're aware that he doesn't have to wait if something happens and it needs to get executed, he can move forward as he sees fit.
I would make a suggestion to reply to, uh, Jim Wang's request.
Okay.
Either we're in or out on that aspect of it.
And that recommendation from both you and Mr. Hall would be to not accept this joint powers agreement at this time.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. I would so make that motion.
Been a motion in a second to, uh, reject the joint powers agreement submitted by Benson County. Do we wanna add in there that we're countering with this?
I, I mean, that's good, just in the same response, same breath, we can say we're not saying no to helping, we're just saying no to this specific plan.
Right. We need that motion amended.
I'd be okay with amending my motion to indicate that we're unwilling to share or provide a memorandum of understanding.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried.
Uh, they opened up for the sheriff's position and the deputy's position and I think it closes on the eighteenth. So the, the issue that they got is for anybody to take over as a sitting sheriff, they have to be a resident of thirty days. So whoever they hire will have to be there thirty days before they become sheriff. So you're probably looking, they're still three, maybe four months out. By the time they go through their process, hire somebody, that person gets to sit at least two to three.
Yes.
And technically Dick Horner is the sheriff at the moment.
The city sheriff, yeah.
Yeah, and so they could, he can hire people as he sees fit. I'm sure it's more of a commission as a whole making those decisions at the moment, but they aren't rudderless at the moment. It's just that I think everybody would prefer somebody with more experience and more, more time and energy to devote to the position than what Mr. Horner can likely give at the moment.
It'd have been a whole lot easier if they would have had staffs available, you know, what you're doing as managing at that time.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is Planning Commission Board appointment. Um, that would be for the county's position on the city planning commission. Um, Ray Sletland is currently serving that. Term is coming to an end. Has indicated he doesn't wanna serve on that again, so I guess we need to put the word out that if someone would like to sit on that, uh, they need to, would they write? They grant us a letter and then we would appoint them to that, that, so that works. Okay.
Ray's been out there a long time.
Yeah.
I'm not even sure how we ended up on there, but.
Next on the agenda is, uh, slotting, making a schedule for the rest of the preliminary budget hearings. Candy, do you have a schedule idea?
Um, I guess I've had a lot of questions asked about employee salary, what, what to do, do it, do they put, don't they put? Um, it's a preliminary budget. Do they put in a wage increase? Do they put in a wage increase? Do they not put in a wage increase?
Well, I guess this goes to their, the department's head should know if somebody needs a raise or not, in my opinion. Okay, we can't give you a blanket. Everybody's getting that this year until we get a year or two of this under our belt to see where this three percent cap ends up. Um, so they know they've got the three percent from their budget last year to work with. That's my feeling. I, I don't know. What, what are your guys' feelings?
My thought would be since it's preliminary budget, is do something that's other counties around us have done. And they've pretty much all gone with the three percent, um, salary increase with the cost or a three percent cost of living increase and a step or a potential step if they so deserved. Then we can work our way back. Um, we would have the month of September to do whether it be, um, employee evaluations. Hey, see where the rest of the budget comes in at. Um, but we, I think we need to give our, our employees a starting point of something. To tell them to be creative and stay within three percent of their last year's budget. Some of them, all their budget is, is wages and, and benefits. Um, you know, especially the smaller offices that are one, two people. You know, I suppose you could cut out a package of paper or something like that, but it doesn't add up to a great deal of, of money. And I think what we're finding is that it's very expensive to advertise, train new employees, um, acquire new employees. Keeping our employees happy, satisfied, I think is, goes a long ways to employee satisfaction and retention.
Absolutely.
So my questions are, when we get into, the one is the, the health insurance, is that come out of my?
I'll get you that figure.
Okay. So that increase I just adjust to my mind. I got it. Whatever, they'll be there. Yep. Okay. The next thing is the employees that have reached the end of their steps. Are they just at that point from there forward, just eligible for the three percent? Or if you have somebody who's deserving, can you give them an extra fifty dollars? There's the step and grade system locked, that step and grade, you know what I mean? Previous discussions, that's Okay, I'm just curious because like, I'm going to use it, I'm going to throw it out there right now. For example, Brent really stepped up after Kevin's left. Total difference. But he's maxed out. He's been there for fifteen years. He can't climb anywhere else. So the only thing I can, you know, so it's just the three percent. Okay. Then I have other, you know, maybe I have some other employees that, I mean, if we're going to a cost of living raise, that's probably what they would obviously get, you know. I believe in you, like what you're saying, a merit, a little bit of a merit system. So I have no problem with that.
But I guess to me, that particular situation is obviously you're probably not going to be able to do this till next year, but I would go through the process of evaluating Brent's position. And seeing if that needs to be, you know, if he needs to go up a step so he can still get these grades.
Okay.
I mean, that's, I mean, if the job has changed a little bit or, you know, other circumstances, and I would say that for anybody in the system that if they go through the work and
And obviously his workload's going to come maybe a little bit more, you know, back the other way.
Right.
But so, I mean, hopefully if I could take some of that burden back.
Right, exactly. But I mean, that's, that's how I would approach that.
And that was just one of the examples I had because I know, uh, I'm starting to look at wages. That's where I'm at with this thing and trying to figure this out. And I follow, you know, I'm following the, and it's easy for all the new hires and everything, you know, because they got a whole sliding scale to work, but.
Yep.
I, that I don't know, but I don't know. I don't think so. No, 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 not Brent. That's Brenton. At Brent is the office guy.
Yep.
Yep. Yeah, too many Brent's going on there. Yep. Yep. So anyway, that would just, he was the one that I noticed was to the end. Everyone else has some room yet, but. All right. Thank you.
Any other?
Can I see where everything comes in on?
You will put that out then to the department head. Okay. Anything else on that?
So to clarify, the commission is just setting the preliminary budget at a three percent cost of living increase plus the step increase for employees. And then other costs are remaining the same for the budget. Okay. I just, there's a requirement in the statute that we have preliminary budget by August tenth. So I just wanted to make sure that that was all clear. Thank you.
Sure. Are we getting docked this out in the next three days? Well, sixth, seventh and eighth is Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Um, ninth and tenth are Saturday and Sunday. I think Candy works way too much the way it is. So I don't want her coming in on Saturday or Sunday.
My point in asking was the commission can just set the preliminary budget without having to hear from everybody. You, you could take last year's budget, do the step plus three percent increases, and that could be the preliminary budget for the moment. And if not, the departments can submit a proposed budget. I think everybody's received that paperwork to submit, but you, you could make that decision so that there isn't a rush to get something done in the next three days, but and then come back around and have the longer conversations later. It's obviously not how it usually works and it's not ideal, but just to make sure that everything's getting done in a timely manner. It might be the decision to be made here.
That'd be easier for you. Okay, so.
I think, I think the bigger budgets should be part of, you know, like the special meeting, because obviously they're going to have more expense than others. You know, because it would only, like the sheriff, the highway department and, you know, well, even if we took, well, state attorneys up, this would just be the
It's mostly wages.
Yeah. Yeah. So.
Here we do Friday.
That's what I was thinking, Friday, you know, if you want to do it in the afternoon on Friday or Friday.
Let's do afternoon.
Okay.
Do we know what our evaluations are yet? What Mel's going to be?
That's on the
To-do list?
That's on the hot plate this morning.
Friday at one or Friday at three or Friday at
Anytime in the afternoon.
I've marked off this week for this purpose, so I'm open. Sure a few around Friday.
One o'clock.
One o'clock Friday.
I'm in hearings, but I should be able to get Megan to cover those.
I would, I would, I would say just your bottom line numbers. I would say we'd need that for the actual budget. But just, just your, just your category, just your category stuff would be
Perfect for this?
Yeah. Hey, uh, Tyler Technology. Oh, wait, is there anything else on, uh, budget we got done?
Can we make a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to have a special budget, uh, preliminary budget meeting at one P M on Friday, the eighth of August. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Tyler Technology. Yes.
No concern of anybody's staff working on payroll, but Tyler's been and the banks away and gather Candy's better than I have been during three, they're not getting their checks during the payroll time. So my question is, respect the body for this technology, that they would come up and talk to any staff about how you do payroll and that sort of thing, or help you with that kind of stuff.
Well, I think I had a Is there an opportunity for an in-person who's on the ground training session with Tyler? Cause I know it's caused a lot of undue stress for staff within this building. You know, somebody's gone above and beyond what her Yeah. And so appreciate all that extra effort. But it's too much. And, um, we want to find some way to alleviate some of that for staff.
The issues with the checks. To clarify. So part of the program is providing Tyler with information prior to the start of their software. So the information that was given to Tyler was wrong. No one at Tyler caught it. Nobody, you know. Then we had a big, uh, yeah, we had a, you know, we had a really big parade, the first payroll. Everybody got paid. Everybody got paid. Everything got fixed. There were, and I'm going to state that there were a few employees that did not make contact with their, either their department head or myself to let us know that there was an issue for us to fix. So the second payroll came around. And that person or persons didn't get their check. Well, I can't, I just can't call a bank because I'm the Ramsey County auditor. They're just going to listen to what I have to say. And the only information that I got from the one bank that I called was that a courtesy email was sent to that employee stating that her account number needed like an extra, I mean, it was only missing like, like two digits or the end digit or something. Anyway, so that person failed to let me know. Yeah. So it was a big, you know, a big fiasco with that. And then it was, you know, it was all my fault. And I'm like, but if you didn't let anybody know, how can I fix it? Because we didn't get anything back from the bank when we sent our direct deposit. Since then, we've, we've, uh, I don't know, we've, we've, like, there were, this payroll on Friday, we had three. And those three have been fixed. Everybody's been paid. Everything is correct. Everything is, we worked out all the glitches, we The only thing that I can say is employees need to take responsibility of their own things. Tyler? If it wasn't for them, I would be gone. I, I would have just going to be honest, I would have thrown in the towel a long time ago. Cause it's not just something that you learn overnight. You know? Now that I'm into, you know, I've gotten two payrolls out of it. I'm like, wow. I'm like, this is pretty slick.
Is anybody else cross-trained on that payroll?
Currently?
Your, your deputy is not, or?
No, don't have time for that right now.
Well, some of these departments need to have people cross-trained, you know? I mean, and I'm sure I'm not going to say you don't have that in your plans, but.
Well, it, it is. It's, it's there.
I mean, this, you know, some of these departments have two people working in them, and if they both don't know what needs to be done, I mean, car accident or sickness or throw a monkey wrench into the whole thing, I'll be right back where it's at.
When you walk into my office and you see that overhead bin and all of those folders in there? You just find one that's labeled payroll.
It'll get you through.
It'll get, it'll it'll there's, you know, probably more than what's needed, but it is everything that I've, you know, like along the way and I've added and I've done and
It, it is everybody that needs training on Tyler, trained on Tyler? Or is that something that's still ongoing?
I'm going to check into because there were some parts of it. I'm going to check into because there were some parts of it. And I need to go to the. The library, either the cloud or the, whatever they call it. To see like what trainings, because not all trainers record. So if you request it. They will, but when we, when we did like a certain part of it. Um, that, that trainer did, so I'm going to. Check out that portion of Tyler. Whatever's, whatever part of it is to, to get it to, yeah, it's on my computer, really good, right here. So that. You know, people need to go and, I mean. Rewatch or.
There's a lot to take in all of them, I'm sure.
Yeah. But I think that's, that's where I think we should go first, just make, if there's people who have questions, if that portion was recorded. And see if they can get back into that.
And I think the tax side of it was the portion that was recorded.
Wha- what, what offices are currently using Tyler, will be using Tyler?
The major users of Tyler would be, um, the treasurer's office, the auditor's office. And the tax director's office is going to tie in with Sidwell. Something with Sidwell, when we get all that going, Sidwell and Tyler do. They talk and they. Share information back and forth. Yeah, but I would, I would really like. Familiarize yourself with it because it's. Very easy to just. Throw your hands up and. Walk away. You know?
And that, that's what concerns me is that we have some really good long-term employees that have thrown in the toll. And, um, and that's why I would like to. If it's available, offer in-person training for, uh, for Ramsey County that. For those departments that, that need it and request it. I think it would, whatever it would cost would be worth salvaging the stability of those departments with the employees that they have.
In, in person wouldn't.
They want help?
No. They. Because almost, almost all of us have two screens now.
Yeah.
So when they, when they do training. You are, you are given a training site. That you can go into, you can. I mean, we, well, okay, my, our office, yeah, we locked it up, we, because we. Yeah, we messed it up that bad, that they, they had to, we had to get Michelle. To go onto the server and. You know, like reboot because we, like, we locked up our computers. But that's what the training site is for. Instead of going into the live and totally messing everything up. And so we, you know, when we're unsure about something, we still have that training site. And you, you go in there, you do what you think, and if it looks right, then you go and go back into the line, just. And that's what they tell you. In training, they were like, don't ever get rid of that training icon. Because it will always, like, you will always need it, you should always need it, if you don't, you don't know what you're doing. Don't do it in the live, do it in the training.
Great advice.
So everybody had the opportunity to get the training, correct?
Yep, yep, with, with whatever, whatever, you know, different parts that pertain to. You know, departments, things like that, yes, yes. Everybody was included in the invites, in the. Whatever the PDF things that they attached that were, you know, this thick and. You know, only a third of it was. What you really needed because, anyway.
Have you had to close your office or at any point in order to do the training, or do you think that would be something of benefit? To you or others being trained, because the level of distractions in your office, because it's the first one out when you walk in the door.
We, we put. You know, one of those big, we put that, we put it on the counter.
But, but there's still a hundred different people coming in and out of your, your door, different distractions at any given time.
During the heavier part of the training, it wasn't.
Cause I, I know I, I couldn't learn that way.
And I guess that would be a, you know, if you, if somebody thinks they need to close it.
Oh, like a squirrel.
Yeah, you know, but I mean, if somebody needs to close their department. For the training, that's definitely acceptable.
Acceptable.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, if there's, if they wanna go back and this stuff is recorded, I mean, go back. Yeah. I don't think there's anybody, you know, just put a sign on the door, we're doing program training and. Even somebody as illiterate as I am, a computer will understand that that's a big deal, I mean.
And those trainers were, they were, I mean. They're very good, they're.
And you still call them with questions, correct? It's not like the training.
So we're getting adequate support. Has the transition been completed, is the code program completely gone?
It will always be there. But going forward with.
You need it for past history research.
Yeah, it, it, like, like what we have on there is just history. You know, we, we reference back to it on, on certain things because. Not everything was correct in the conversion, and we, and we know that, sure, we're. We've, we've heard that from other counties that you're gonna be, you know, a couple of years, a couple of years out, and you're gonna find. You know, oh, that didn't get, you know, like, oh, that one, you know, why doesn't that have that middle initial? Oh, well, it didn't show up here, or, you know, so I mean, there's.
That happens with.
It, it's just. We have to take it just. One day at a time, one situation at a time.
Thank you.
But as far as payroll, yes, everything. Has been fixed, but if an employee doesn't let me know. I can't fix it.
So there's no, is that good? Looks like our visitors and delegation's bugged out, so we don't have to worry about that, any portfolio or other announcements from the commissioners?
I have nothing.
Meeting adjourned.
I'd never had it on there, obviously.